Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the board of directors meeting. We will begin as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge to the flag. Let's take some. One patient under God. Justice for all. Thank you. We now have time for public comment. Yes.
Mr. Camo Lebanon City, I just have a question. Do you have any information about an erroneous mailing that went out to voters in North Hornwall? Regarding a change in location? I got a phone call where a lady said she got a mailing telling her her location was changed, and then the next day she got another mailing. And when she called voter registration, she was told to disregard the mailing. And I was just trying to get more information in case I got any more phone calls about it.
I've not heard anything.
Okay, I'll stop there.
Yeah, we'll have to check with Sean, so we're in.
I mean, that's the best sources.
Yeah, I I will. I just thought I thought it would be on the agenda today, but. Okay, thank you. Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Okay. We'll look for the approval of the minutes.
Second.
It's removed in second. If any questions or conditions or deletions, yes, sir.
Which minutes? Which the?
The seventh of September. They do usually mention them. Okay, anything else? Well, favorite please indicate by saying good night. Both same signs. So. Our treasurer is here. Good morning, Mrs. Millen.
We have receipts on September nineteenth and twentieth of five thousand eleven dollars and seventy seven cents. We have a total cash of two million, five hundred fourteen thousand nine hundred twenty four dollars and sixty five cents. We are expenditures of one million, two hundred and seventy nine thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars and sixty cents. Our tax claim is three thousand, seven hundred eleven dollars and sixty five cents, which leaves us a balance of one million, two hundred thirty one thousand, three hundred sixty two dollars and forty cents.
Make a motion to approve the treasurer's report subject to.
Sir. Okay, it's been moved in second with any questions or any discussion required. Here, no, no, in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I post same sign. So.
Okay, I have one more thing for the prison. They had to open a new checking account. Uh, so this is just to prove that for this side or to on it.
Would you authorize that checking out the person?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same science. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Shaw.
Josh Nadel, Director of Community Resources. Under personnel transactions, resignations and terminations. Susan Lampier, Fiscal Technician in Children and Youth Resignation effective September twenty second. Jamie Hampton, Case Worker One, Children and Youth Rescind Offer of Employment effective September eleventh. Ryan Works, Administrator of Community Action Partnerships, Resignation effective October thirteenth. Raymond Heaton, Full Time Deputy Sheriff in the Sheriff's Office, Resignation effective September fourteenth. Joshua Heckman, Full Time Deputy Sheriff in the Sheriff's Office, Resignation effective October twelve. And Joshua Avila's Casual Part Time Deputy Sheriff in the Sheriff's Office, Resignation effective September ten.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignations and terminations.
Second. Moved in second, and then we approve those transactions. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I post same science. So.
Under changes of status, transfers and promotions, I have two motions. The first, to approve a request from Erin Moyer, Administrator of Children and Youth Services, for all non-union employees within the Children and Youth Services Department to increase their hours work per week from thirty seven and a half hours to forty hours per week effective October twenty ninth, twenty twenty three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second that we approved Director Moore's request. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I post same signs. So.
Motion to approve a request from probation services director Audrey Fortin to temporarily increase the work week from thirty seven and a half hours per week to forty hours per week for two positions. Amanda Ramos and Barbara Sato, the employees in the probation services department, effective immediately through the filling of the vacant office support two position.
I'll make a motion to approve the request from probation.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? Here, no, no, in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I post same signs. So order.
Dalton Lovell, Change of Status from Full Time Telecommunicator in the Department of Emergency Services to Casual Part Time Telecommunicator at the rate of nineteen dollars and twelve cents per hour effective October first. Bonnie Betts, Change of Status from Part Time Court Clerk in Clerk of Courts to General Clerk seeing the proponentary's office at the rate of nine hundred and twenty five dollars and eighty three cents biweekly effective October second. And Dawn Reed, Change of Status from Casual Call LPN at Renova to Full Time LPN, No Change in Her Rate effective October first.
Thank you much for those.
Second.
We moved in second that we approved those transactions. Any questions regarding the motion? Here, no, no, in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I post same signs. So.
Under other transactions, Area Agency on Aging would like to hire Lauren Relator as an Aging Care Management Supervisor Two at the rate of one thousand eight hundred and thirty four dollars and twenty eight cents biweekly effective October second. Children and Youth Services would like to hire Jennifer Manbeck as a casework supervisor one at the rate of one thousand six hundred and seventy eight dollars and ninety nine cents biweekly effective September twenty fifth. Children and Youth Services would like to hire Ahmed Elslay as a caseworker one at the rate of one thousand five hundred and sixty two dollars and sixteen cents biweekly effective September twenty fifth. President Judge Tobak would like to hire Larry Mann as a court officer at the rate of twelve dollars and fifty five cents per hour effective September twenty fifth. And the Department of Emergency Services would like to hire the following four individuals as full-time telecommunicators, all at the rate of sixteen dollars and eighty seven cents per hour, all effective September twenty fifth, and that is Cooper Smith, Melissa Lawson, Melissa Rumpf, and Caitlin Pryser. Voter Registration would like to hire Jason Ayers as a regular part-time office support one at the rate of thirteen dollars and forty nine cents per hour effective September twenty fifth.
I'll make a motion to approve those other transactions.
Second. Hey, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any questions regarding the motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I post same signs. So.
Moving on to Salary Board, Motion to Approve All Transactions Previously Read Plus the Following Toby Johnson's Salary Increase from Telecommunicator One in the Department of Emergency Services to Telecommunicator Two at the rate of eighteen dollars and ninety three cents per hour effective September seventeen.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the salary board transactions. Any questions? Here, no, no, in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I post same signs. So. Thank you, Michelle.
We're literally so you can speak slow.
Okay.
Probably start to take any one and a half hour. More commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Bob Dow, Director of Emergency Services, and I'm here this morning with two change orders to present. Uh, the first one is a change order, electrical change order in the amount of eighteen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, this is several, it's basically fixing several things that just weren't correct on our drawings. I was adding obstruction light, some white holes. Adding some security pieces that weren't originally included in the drawings. Uh, and then connecting our our tower shelter to the building cover system.
I put motion, sir.
I can do it together.
I'll make a motion to. Oh, I'm sorry.
If there's no reason to separate, then we'll do them together.
Yeah.
We'll make a motion to approve the uh, change orders as presented.
Um, in a second. Did you present second? I'm gonna make on the rock. Well, let me do a quick summary of the second one.
Yeah, we're doing them together. You get to do the second one.
Oh, there's more than that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I thought that was all together there.
The second one was a change order with a general contractor in the amount of twenty ninety thousand, five hundred sixty one dollars. Uh, this change order is to swap out everywhere where we have mulch.
Notice them.
To River Rock. We are, we looked at the long-term costs of mulch. Uh, and after speaking with landscapers, the eight to ten thousand dollars a year, basically we maintain and replace it. Um, this is a so there's a lot of capital costs here, but it's going to pay off in two or three years. It's wise.
I also like the fact that it's um, not a fire hazard because cigarette butts can lots of fires start from that. Now I'll make the motion to include both.
Moved in second that we approved those change orders. Questions regarding the motion? Here, no, no, in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I post same signs. So.
Uh, just if I could give a real quick update. Not much has changed since the last update. The building is very close to being completed, but we still don't have that. The discussion now is focused on making sure that if we get to that point, we have a way to temporarily prevent it from freezing. Just gonna do what we have to do to keep our costs low until that gear arrives and we're able to actually turn on the system.
Anything else that you want to give us an update on?
Everything.
Did they give you an ETA?
Uh, the first ETA we had was the beginning of this year, so every month it just gets kicked down the river a little bit further. It it was delivered, the switchgear was delivered to the factory in Tennessee or Kentucky. And Tennessee, that's where it's being built, okay, or assembling with parts sourced from all over the country and then some from overseas as well. Uh, specifically Italy is where the breakers were. And it's just a supply chain shortage issue. But it was, so it was delivered for inspection. On inspection, they found something wrong with it in manufacturers, and now it's being, it's being remedied. The parts arrived and it was, it did not pass factory testing, you know, did not have, there's no limitations, but they had to renew it. That was one get it right. Yeah, yeah, you do need it right.
Well, I'd like, if we have a couple of minutes to talk about the nine one one funding, can either you or Jamie make give us an update, whoever's got the latest.
So we have a resolution that a number of counties are, have already passed or in the process of passing, urging the legislature to renew the nine one one funding reauthorization, which for couple of decades now, uh, has been the a fee on telephone bills, which helps and for the most part helps to fund uh, the nine one one.
Public safety.
All consumer telephone. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh. It and then that money, that money is collected by the state, forwarded onto the counties, and in our case represents seventy five percent of the funding of operating our PSAP or our public service answering point. That has yet to be renewed. It is going to sunset in January. The legislation has to be renewed every so many years when they consider whether or not to increase the fee or not. Um, and it is up for renewal. Uh, however, it it seems to have stagnated in the legislature at this point. Um, the concern is communicated by County Commissioners Association is that there aren't any scheduled house session days between now and the end of the year, so concern is will they actually renew it before the end of the year? And if not, what does that mean for counties? And in our case, Bob provided these numbers and all, if he has anything to add to what I've got here. We received three million, nineteen thousand from that fee in, that's twenty twenty three numbers.
Twenty twenty two, twenty twenty two.
Twenty three is the most. We're gonna be, that's the same right now. Again, this has an increase, there's an increase proposed by the County Commissioners Association. I'm just talking about current numbers. So three million dollars a year uh, is seventy five percent of the cost of operating our our nine one one center. And if you break that down, if this fee is not renewed and counties are then expected to, I mean, we obviously we can't stop operations, we'd have to continue. This is money we've relied on year after year after year. Um, that comes to about eight thousand, two hundred, eight thousand, two hundred dollars a day that the county and our, that's the number for our county would have to put forth to continue to operate uh, if there is no renewal of the fee, and that's assuming that if it's not done by the sunset, that it would be done at some point. You know, when they're back in session, but at this point, we don't have any idea what the outlook is on renewing the speed. So it's it's
unbelievable that they would not address this. It it affects every citizen of the state. I mean, how do you just say, we'll wait till maybe January when we get back to work, you know, thing like.
I think it's also we're talking about the fact that the state keeps some of this money and then supplements other systems that we would now have to pay for, which would increase our local budget as well. Good examples are nine one ones. Right now, the state pays for those because it's a regional system in York. That's all paid for by the same money that comes from that E nine one surcharge.
Well, and I also think it's important to point out that when we receive this money, we have, we have the opportunity to invest. And right now you can actually get something on investments, and that helps keep our uh, whole budget in intact. And if we don't have the money to work with, we're going to be hurting on more than one level, and we can't keep up with technology. I mean, being able to text and put, uh, shall we say, the little video clips and things forwarded? That's so in, that's so valuable to our enforcement, law enforcement. From the sheriff all the way to every police department, to the detectives, state police, they all rely on us to capture this information. And, uh, you know, without it, what are we going to do? How can we keep the people safe? This is part of the process. And I know that the legislature has session days that are scheduled, but I respectfully request that they come back into session if it's only to vote for this nine one one fee. It's that important.
Well, I've been supposed to pay in the interim till we get to, asking what we should do. I think we need to keep paying for the service and keep the service going.
Well, presumably it'll be in your January, in your budget for twenty twenty four, so you'll have it there. If it's not renewed, you just, you wouldn't have the revenue, you'd have the expense built in. Yeah, yes.
So we have a resolution that was requested.
Would you like me to read the resolution? A resolution of the County of Lebanon, Thomas, Pennsylvania, urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to reauthorize Chapter fifty three of Title thirty five of the Pennsylvania Consolidated Statutes with nine one one surcharge increase to support NG nine one one, which is next generation nine one one system across the Commonwealth. Whereas the top priority for Pennsylvania counties in twenty twenty three is securing nine one one funding and reauthorization. And whereas in twenty fifteen, the General Assembly approved legislation that became Act Twelve, a comprehensive rewrite of the nine one one Public Safety Emergency Telephone Act. And whereas Act Twelve included improvements to nine one one system administration, respecting county's role as providers of the system while balancing the broader interests of coordination statewide and working toward a sustainable and equitable fee and attendant financing structure. Whereas as a result of Act Twelve, the current primary funding source supporting nine one one service in Pennsylvania is a one dollar and sixty five cent surcharge levied on communication services capable of two-way communication to a public safety answering point such as wireline or wireless telephone service. And whereas Act Twelve has been remarkably successful creating a solid partnership between Pima and the counties in enhancing this critical service and in positioning us to take advantage of the promises of next generation technologies. And whereas under county stewardship, Pennsylvania nine, Pennsylvania's nine one one system is one of the best managed and up-to-date systems in the nation, the fewest PSAPs per capita among large states and a commitment to moving toward next generation nine one one technologies. Whereas the current nine one one surcharge is scheduled to sunset in January of twenty twenty four, and the new nine one one surcharge must adequately support current county needs as the current funding stream fails to keep pace with the needs requires county to, counties to rely both heavily and increasingly on property tax. Whereas the current funding structure covers seventy five percent of Lebanon County's cost to provide this vital service with the remainder drawn from county property tax revenues. And whereas the need to address the funding stream is immediate and will reach crisis proportions, if action is delayed past the January thirty first expiration of the surcharge, and now therefore be it resolved that the county of, that Lebanon County joins with the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania in support of an updated reauthorization of Chapter fifty three of Title thirty five before January thirty first twenty twenty four. And resolve that, excuse me, resolve that Lebanon County supports an increase in the nine one one surcharge to two dollars, to two dollars and thirty cents with fifteen cent annual increase until next reauthorization. Without an increase to the surcharge, counties across the Commonwealth would need to fund any remaining costs through county property tax dollars. And resolved, Lebanon County supports a five-year reauthorization that allows for time to better understand and determine if the surcharge is still an appropriate funding mechanism as technologies and capability cover. And resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Lebanon County Legislative Delegation to Governor Shapiro and to the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. Adopted this day twenty twenty.
Their motion could approve.
Now, second.
We moved in second that we approved this request and this resolution. Any questions regarding this issue or this motion? Yes, James.
So if it were to increase to two dollars and thirty cents, what percentage then would that cover of the annual budget? You said currently seventy five percent.
Yep.
On services. What does that? Because is that just covering to to cover costs for new technologies? Because that's mentioned in the resolution. So the percentage will stay the same, or are we looking at an increased coverage on your burn costs?
Um, currently, the county pays in about a million dollars in our budget because of this. Statewide, the fair nine one one system has been operating at deficit for quite some time. This, all this money that comes in from nine one is is managed by the state, all of our expenses reported to the state, and they look at that. That's how that fee was determined, that increase is determined to try and reduce that operating efficiency line. So this, I mean, that additional money will certainly offset the burden to Lebanon County taxpayer through property taxes. Um, but it would increase, you know, everybody who has a phone pays this charge. That's the E nine one charge. To answer your question directly, it still wouldn't entirely. Yeah, he's asked for a percentage, which I don't have at this point, at this moment. But it would, it would significantly reduce that burden. And that that radio or fifteen, this stuff to keep getting more expensive.
And if I'm not wrong, this is the number one priority for C cap, all the counties across the state. This is our number one priority to get this passed before the first of the year.
Okay, I'll favor the motion, please indicate by saying aye. I post same signs. So move. Anything else, Rob?
All right. Thank you.
So your question was, again, what's the percentage of the budget that it would fund?
Yes.
At two thirty? Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, we have one just here on the floor, if you don't mind, don't love their recorder deeds as a. Sorry.
Morning. Morning. John Cloud Recorder, Eve, thank you for adding me into your agenda this morning. I just wanted to announce that Lebanon County now has a record alert program for property owners. So you can go on to the Lebanon County website under Recorder Deeds and sign up to have anytime a deed of mortgage satisfaction, please, anything that would be recorded for your property, you would be alerted to that recording. You will need to find your UPI number in order to sign up for this. I do have the link to the property viewer on my page. It's also on the homepage of the website and of the assessment site. It's also on your tax bill, that number, but there is a way for you to find your number.
Is there?
There, it's free to all property owners in the county.
I want to talk about a little bit about the benefit.
Yeah, I have phone calls all the time about, um, you know, how would I know if somebody was trying to steal my property? So that's why I implemented this program. This is, it's not preventative, but it will alert you if something is recorded that you're not expecting um, to have reported, so you can get on top of it right away.
And how, how is this? Is it a statewide system or a private system?
This is for Lebanon County.
But I mean.
This is through my, my software, my recording software, which is Landex, which is.
Through Landex, okay.
And they are, uh, London County Home Business.
That's awesome.
Cool.
Any questions for, uh, John?
No, I've been hearing for years, though, that people can do that, so I think it's a great service. I'll make a motion to, uh. You don't need a month.
There's nothing that comes out of that agenda use my record improvement, so.
It's already.
Service enhancement.
So.
Okay.
Great department enhancement. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Jamie. Yes, as people have been.
I have, um, three hotel tax grant fund applications here. The first two are for the same project, but different locations. This, these are applications from the Lebanon Valley Conservancy to, um, fund the Lebanon County Heritage Trail Map Project. And this is an ongoing program where they develop maps for guided walks through, uh, walking trails through different towns around the county. Um, one of them for the, uh, Jonestown and Myers Town area. Jonestown and Myers Town areas. And another four maps for the Anvil and Palmyra areas. Each of these are a forty five hundred dollar project, and they're asking for three thousand, three seventy five each, so it's two different applications. Totaling sixty seven fifty, I think it's thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars.
I'm just really put a motion out. I'll make a motion to our person.
My second emotion, I do have a question.
So do I, I think.
Go ahead.
You go first.
Well, um, do we allow structuring so that they can come in under what is the allowed amount? Because they're both in the same organization. Am I making sense?
I don't, I don't understand what you mean by structuring.
If they would have both been submitted together, would they be over the amount that we have allotted? No. So they'd still be under.
They're each seventy five percent.
So it doesn't really matter, but I never thought about that before.
Well, splitting them up doesn't increase the percentage.
Right.
No, I'm inside.
Oh.
Anything else? Well, favorite please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same science, same lead.
Okay, then the next one, um, is with the Gretna Productions doing business as Gretna Theater. This is for the Gretna Theater twenty twenty three season. Uh, they are reimbusting a full grant of seventy five hundred dollars with a project cost of seventy five hundred dollars, so I presume they're asking for more than the seventy five percent, or maybe didn't quite understand the formula, although they, pardon me?
I was gonna say, I don't know their budget shows more than it seems like they could be less than twenty, I mean, fund twenty five percent if they used the budget that they actually submitted.
I think so. I'm just, I'm going on.
I think they filled it in wrong.
Yeah, I'm going on the application.
That's what I was going on. I was, they were suggesting we, we do seventy five percent of the seventy five hundred contribute fifty six, twenty five, but I I, um.
Would you, would you like that we check with them? It just came in.
It has to be corrected, either.
Say, this is not our, our budget. This is our marketing budget, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm inclined to agree that they could have qualified had they filled it out properly.
Yeah, something's not right with the way the, um, total project cost is because their marketing over here shows eleven thousand, nine ninety four. And, uh, you know, there, I just don't think that was filled in right.
So we can, we can adopt the seventy five hundred if that's your wish, and then subject to, you know, we want to check that, but we just to be sure. But that's what I, I would say.
Yeah, that, that would be fine, or we. Yeah, that, that would be fine, or we give, you know, seventy five percent of the seventy five hundred, but I want to be fair to them. I don't think they have it filled in correctly.
Yeah, their total budget they're showing is thirty nine thousand eight hundred.
Right.
We'll take a motion. Acceptable.
A second emotion.
Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Post same science, so move.
I have a liquid fuels application from Swatara Township for, uh, line painting and that project cost is ten thousand dollars. Their allocation from county liquid fuels uh, according to the formula would be for five thousand sixty one dollars.
Make a motion to approve the liquid fuels request from Swatara.
Second. It's, it's second that we approved that liquid fuels request. Any questions? Hearing no knowledge, favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs, so move.
Um, next I have appointments to the Lebanon County Commission, uh, for women for uh, two names that have been forwarded by the commission are Delcy Calloman, whose term would be effective September thirteenth, twenty twenty three, as well as Deja Piles.
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we approved the, uh, commission members, uh, volunteers in the, uh, Women's Commission. Any questions regarding the motion? If you understand what I just said, in America. Not all favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs, so move.
Okay, next is a grant signatory authority designation. This would be for Commissioner Phillips to have the authority to sign all documents related to and entering into agreements with Pennsylvania Department of Transportation on behalf of the county uh, responsible for submitting the final proposal and he grants. This is specifically a request from the District Attorney's Office for the grant that, um, the impaired driving grant. It was at one time known as the DUI checkpoint grant, but they've changed that over the years. It's now the impaired driving grant. So when the, when the, uh, submission is submitted electronically, that Commissioner Phillips would receive the email and sign off.
It's removed and seconded. Any questions regarding this motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Most same science, so move.
I have two, um, requests for disabled veteran exemptions for real estate tax for Bruce Reinhold of South Eleventh Street Lebanon and Herman Kuzada of North Seventh Street Lebanon.
Love to hear those objections. It's been moved and seconded that we approved those property tax exemptions. Any questions? Hearing no knowledge, favor please indicate by saying aye. Most same science, so move.
I have a resolution from the county, um, supporting and does and, and indicating, sorry, participation, uh, in the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States, United States Semi Quincentennial, which is the two hundred fiftieth celebration of America coming up in twenty twenty six. And this would, um, plan, encourage, develop and coordinate the commemoration of the two hundred fiftieth anniversary. And engage all Pennsylvanians in all sixty seven counties through their officially recognized programs, projects and events. And adopt the four pillars of epic, epic, which are educate, preserve, innovate and celebrate. And this resolves that the county, that the county, uh, indicates its support and participation in America two fifty PA.
Make a motion to support America two fifty PA. I think it's going to be just a grand fine for not just Pennsylvania, but the whole country. And, uh, I think that Josh Shapiro has his sights on being the very first governor in the entire state to have all counties on board, so we can be a part of that.
It's removed and seconded. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Most same science, so move.
Okay, and, uh, lastly, I did receive an email from Ray Bender on behalf of the Governor Dick Board asking if he would consider, um, assigning a liaisonship to the board at some point, um, Governor Dick Board. I think they, they feel that, uh, I mean, a number of other departments and some other appoint, appointed advisory boards and so on, and then being the board trustees. Um, and some others already have that sort of thing, and I think they're aware of that. I've asked that for purposes of communication back and forth, that you consider, um, a liaisonship.
Would that be with the first of the year or do they want it immediately or?
Uh, I, as soon as you're willing, I guess. I didn't really, they didn't really say either way.
When do they meet?
Good question. It's on a Thursday. It's on a Thursday. Oh, is it tonight? Okay, I knew it was on a Thursday.
Is it always the same Thursday? Okay, well then whoever has farm preservation should not be on that board because they're tonight.
Okay.
I'd be happy to, I think it's a good idea to consider. So I'd be happy to volunteer to serve in a capacity.
Well, I'll make a motion to appoint Mike, at least for the rest of this year, and then we can discuss, discuss it again, depending on appointments for next year.
No, he does. He does, he does well. I'll second the motion.
I think it's seven.
And you may want to go tonight.
He actually has something tonight. Suddenly you counter.
Dive in right away. All right, thank you, Joe, for that. Um, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Most save science, so move. Thank you, Kim. My, my, I'm volunteering. Um, anything else, Jim?
No, you have assessment appeals at one thirty. We do have an executive session afterward, hopefully at the ten thirty for, uh, union negotiations. We're going to have a conference call and they return.
Okay, I just have two or three things. Um, we ended the military breakfast, uh, the other day and there was a very stirring, um, presentation about suicide, veterans suicides. And one of the numbers that stuck out with me was that there's a spike, of course, in the last couple of years of veteran suicides, but veteran deaths by suicide are four times the combat deaths over the last twenty years. It's just a, it's an epidemic in, in those circles. Um, so this is suicide prevention month, so that's why that, that was a tie-in with that. But, um, on, on another side, the Veterans Hospital, which is, uh, you know, a very large employer. For the third year in a row, the director was down in Washington and honored for the, uh, the, um, constituents, the, um, patients, yeah, all the, and the employee satisfaction. They got like the trifecta uh, for the three years in a row, number one in the country, this VA. So they're doing a lot right and they're, they're actually doing more, uh, housing and so on for veterans, uh, homeless veterans and so on. And there's a nine eight eight veterans crisis line as well. So they announced that that's something that, uh, to, you know, to give a, a, a little support there. Um, and that at the gap, um, the gate, you know, the twenty million dollar gate from many moons ago and that funding came in, uh, is November first is going to be activated. So you will be able to get into the gap grounds by way of the Fisher Avenue entrance. So, and on a, a happy note for the county, another uh, great, uh, presentation by our four H folks, uh, Linda Seidel and her uh, in the fashion and, and in the fabric area. I, I think they got all the top awards in the state this year, uh, which isn't the first time, but it's certainly, uh, consistent quality and, and it's a great, um, we invest at various times during the year with, uh, hotel tax and other things for these folks and it just, you know, they just do such a terrific job and the volunteers are, are, uh, are, are all very strong, capable people that, uh, in their talents or speak for themselves. So I just wanted to shine a little light on that one. But other than that, we can look for Washington adjourned or comments.
Regarding Liz Mills yesterday.
Oh, yes.
Just wanted to recognize, uh, Dr. Jeff Gioco, who also serves as our, our coroner, uh, Peter Piles, going to the hall and gathering frisked, at his staff, the friskers that, uh, put together chicken dinners and, and some, and made them available to all our first responders in Lebanon County. I think that is the fifth year they've done it, but you just became aware of it, but issued citations to each of them that we're delivering personally. They were just swamped yesterday, so we wanted to stay out of the way, but.
Thousand dinners they did yesterday, a thousand, so.
Yeah, goodness of their hearts, so, uh.
Yeah.
Very cool.
See them, thank you. Washington adjourned?
Some.
Thank you. We stand adjourned. Thank you for your attendance and your.